It is Saturday, May 25th, 2024, and this is Sedona Life with Stephen Hanks, Red Rock Country's radio magazine, heard every Saturday at this time on KAZM 106.5 FM and 780 AM, Mellow Mountain Radio, and livestreamed at mellomountainradio.com. So if you don't have one of those little transistors that I used to have in the 60s, you can go online and listen to it live. I'm your host, Stephen Hanks, and I welcome you to a radio show that each and every week explores all the fascinating aspects of life in Sedona and the Verde Valley and engages with intriguing personalities from all walks of life in our area. Today's show is being sponsored by an outstanding local real estate company. Damien and Danielle's Sedona Village Real Estate Group with Coldwell Banker Realty should be your go-to real estate agents in the Sedona area. Why, you may ask? Because their experience in Sedona and the Verde Valley and their dedication to this community matter. My producer behind the glass is the always reliable Ryan Thompson, who will actually be producing Sedona Life with Stephen Hanks on two consecutive days. And of course, now my listeners are confused about that, so I'll let them know what's going on. So if you heard last week's show, you might remember me saying that I was headed to New York City for a family wedding. And while I was going to be in town, I'd also be producing and hosting a cabaret show fundraiser for New York Democratic Congressional Candidates. Well, I'll actually be in New York City when you're hearing this show. So we're recording this episode on Friday, May 17th, the day before my live May 18th show tomorrow. I hope you've got all that. Thankfully, my very media savvy guests in the studio can now pretend it's actually next Saturday. Man, Ryan, this is starting to sound like one of those mind-bending Star Trek time travel episodes. So since we're taping this show a week before it actually airs, I'm going to dispense with our usual top of the show segment, Stephen's Sedona scene, which always flags a few fascinating events happening over the following week in the area. And then we're going to go straight to the conversation with my guests, who are all members of the Sedona City Council. But before I introduce them, I just want to offer one full disclosure comment and then one ground rule for this particular show that myself and my guests will follow. So two of my in-studio guests today are not only members of the Sedona City Council, but are also members of the Democrats of the Red Rocks political organization here in Sedona. As a passionate patriotic progressive, I love using alliteration, I'm also a member of DOR, as they call that group. So I want to be clear about where I lean politically. Actually, you know where I lean politically when I'm driving around Sedona and you'll see the car magnets I just put on my car today for the three people in my studio right now.
Thank you for that.
What's that?
Thank you for that.
Oh, I appreciate it. I hope they stay there for a while. So here's, so now that said, here's the ground rule. My three guests, Sedona Mayor Scott Jablow, Vice Mayor Holly Plug, and Council Member Kathy Kinsella are all running for reelection this year, but this show will not be about their campaigns. It will be about issues that have recently been before the city council and will be in the future and the work that the council has been doing. If listeners out there like what they hear from my guests about their work and their positions on council issues and you want to support them, the mayor for another two-year term and the council members for another four-year term, that's up to you as a voter when the primary election happens on July 30th and then the general election happens on November 5th. Now, with all that preamble out of the way, I'll introduce my special guests and get this important conversation started. So Mayor and Council Member Scott Jablow moved to Sedona from New Jersey. Am I, that's right, right?
Long Island.
You know, I knew I was going to mess that up, but all right, but I'm glad you corrected me. You moved here in 2010.
Correct.
And he worked his way through both appointed and elected positions in the community, serving on the Sedona Fire District Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Personnel Board, and gained experience and understanding of the rules and regulations affecting city development, safety, and human resources. Scott was elected as a councillor twice, beginning in 2014, appointed Vice Mayor by the other council members in 2020, and elected as Sedona Mayor in 2022. Sedona Vice Mayor Holly Plug and her husband Bert had lived in Sedona since 2013, having first visited as a tourist in the winter of 1993. Wow, you were really a homesteader. Holly spent five years serving on the city's Budget Work Group and on its Fiscal Sustainability Work Group, developing financial solutions for large-scale infrastructure projects, way ahead of her time on infrastructure. While Donald Trump was claiming it was Infrastructure Week, Holly was actually doing Infrastructure Weeks. She is past president of the Sedona Art Center and also past president of the Rotary Club of Sedona and former board member of the Sedona Women. She has served on a number of local nonprofit boards dedicated to public policy issues in the area of education, justice, and community building. And Holly has also been the recipient of the Spirit of Sedona Volunteer of the Year Award, which she was awarded in 2018. Sedona City Council Member Kathy Kinsella has owned her home in Sedona also since 2010. Did you guys communicate?
No.
Did you know each other?
Nope.
I wish we did.
Wow, you guys, oh man, the word must have gone out. I mean, were property values really low in 2010?
Actually, yes, they were.
Oh, okay. Well, it was after the financial crisis.
2008 crash.
Oh, wow. God, 11 years later, I moved here. I should have been on top of that earlier. Man, okay. Kathy joined the Sedona City Council after serving for three years on the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, which oversees land use development review and design throughout the city. Kathy is a past president of the League of Women Voters Greater Verde Valley, has served on the boards of numerous community organizations, and works with local nonprofits focusing on food insecurity, civil rights, and justice. And she is a recipient of the League of Women Voters Greater Verde Valley 2017 Citizen Engagement Award. I welcome all of you distinguished people of the community to Sedona Life with Stephen Hanks.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
It's really great having you. So I want to start, and I would be very remiss if I didn't begin this conversation with the very low-hanging fruit, which has been the recent controversy over the proposed car park, which frankly has led to much derision, much of it over the top in my humble opinion, from national, even some international press outlets. I mean, when the Rupert Murdoch-owned New York Post jumps on a story like this, you know you've got a problem. Not only that, a right-wing MAGA talk show host with a show on this station, a couple of hours before mine on Saturday morning, has been hammering the Sedona City Council about this issue for weeks, going as far as calling members of the council, present company included, and I'm paraphrasing here, liberal elite do-gooders who are probably wealthy or attacks along those lines. So for any of my listeners who don't know much about why this issue became such a big story, I'd like you all to chime in on laying out the issue, some of the history that led to the original decision, and where things on this stand now. And I know it's been on hold, but a lot of people may not know what the evolution of this whole thing is. So who wants to volunteer to start?
Well, all right.
So Kathy.
This council, this iteration of council, has been talking about programs and policies that would help address homelessness in Sedona for years.
Right.
So out of those discussions, and those discussions usually start at budget levels when you're talking about setting budget priorities and that you want to put money into addressing certain concerns, whether those be homelessness, housing building, recreation, whatever it is, transit. We hired a housing coordinator who started working on these issues in a very dedicated way. It was identified that there is a population of people living in Sedona that have children in the school system or that are working in our local businesses that are living in their cars. They're living in their cars because unlike in 2008 and 2010, when a lot of us moved here, housing prices are not low. Housing prices are through the roof in Sedona. A lot of that is linked to the lack of housing from our, the explosion of short-term rentals that have occurred in our area. But we do have people, the people that are serving you in restaurants, the people that are delivering your packages, the people that are, you know, doing your home repairs, landscaping, are living in their cars. So there is no legal place to park your car and sleep in it overnight within the Sedona city limits. It does not exist based on our zoning.
Except on private property.
Except on private, that's correct. That's right. But on a public street. So what, one of the program, one of the proposals that came out of our housing department was to create a location that would allow people who are working in Sedona or have children in the school system in Sedona a place to do that. So the question for safe place to park was a zoning, a rezoning question for a small portion of the Cultural Park Place area that then sleeping in your car overnight would be allowed in that area, would be legal by zoning. And the proposal was to put amenities in such as toilets and showers so that people would have access to those things. And it would be monitored overnight by a professional organization. There would, pre-registration would be necessary to take part, and it would be limited to 40 spaces for a period of two years. Why two years? Because that's the anticipated amount of time it would take to go through the master planning exercise for what will eventually happen at the Cultural Park area, which we're now calling the West Sedona Gateway. So that's the background. I hope that's helpful.
No, it is. Scott, let me come to you on this. So a lot of the pushback and the groups in the area that are fighting this, you know, the group that went out and got signatures for petitions to stop this, what's your read on what the big argument is or the arguments that were put forward against doing something like this?
Well, there's neighborhood concerns. It really boils down to some people having the opinion of not in my backyard.
Right.
Even though this location is thousands of feet away from the closest backyard, is not visible from any neighborhood or city street, and these people seem to have the opinion of that's not a good spot. There's another group of people who believe that by having our workers, who we critically need and are basically unhomed, they're not homeless, they're unhomed, and the difference is a lot of these people had homes, but it was rented out or sold out from beneath them for a short-term rental. So it wasn't by choice that they want to be in their car. But some people just feel that they can live somewhere else. It's not the city's responsibility to find housing for the workers.
Right. And what would have been the alternative to a car park situation for these people other than more affordable housing in the area?
Well, that is the alternative. And we do have a project on Shelby that's moving forward. We're going to be, we have spoken about another project also in Sedona. The problem is, what's held us up is that interest rates went up.
Yeah.
And that caused some of our projects to be put on hold.
Right.
So this is a stopgap. I don't think there's anyone at this table that believes that this is a great answer. It's not. I'm not even proud of it. And I've gone publicly and said, I'm not proud of this, but we need to keep these people here. They are either workers, as Kathy Kinsella said, in our food stores, stocking shelves, making deliveries, whatever. But some of them also, one or two teachers, and some of them work in our professional offices.
Right.
If they leave, who do we have to do this work?
Yeah.
So we're landlocked for employees in the Verde Valley. We don't have people coming, that many people come from Flagstaff. It's not financially appealing to them, especially for the lower wages. I mean, I'm not talking about city councils or city staff. I'm talking about in the shops and offices, law offices or doctors' offices.
Right.
So this is just a stopgap.
Right, right. So the situation now is that it's either on hold or in a happy holly. So you, I know you didn't plan this or maybe even want it, but you've become a little bit of a darling of conservative Republicans in this area who weren't in favor of it because you did not vote to continue doing it. So tell us a little bit what your feeling about it was and where the situation is now.
Okay. I think for me, housing is the most important thing.
Right.
And I think that we were out of sequence to some degree. I understand and appreciate the desire to do something, do something, anything, let's just get it done. But I think that in retrospect, and it's, and these are very difficult things because as Councillor Kinsella said, Kathy, we have been talking about this for quite a while, but people don't normally pay attention until something triggers them to pay attention.
Right.
And so I think that there's several different streams here. When I say out of sequence, I just think we should focus on housing, and that will solve all problems. Somebody has a place to live. And now we've created a situation where we have, as somebody who testified before council said, we've woken up the sleeping giant.
Yeah.
And I think now we've, we're, we have a group that wants to see the Cultural Park return to its former status as an amphitheater and an entertainment venue.
Which I personally think is crazy, but we can get to that later.
And they have linked up with the people who were against the car park, the safe place to park because of fear, fear that we will turn into San Francisco or Portland, Oregon, or Seattle, Washington.
Homeless people would end up living there.
Build it and they will come.
Right, right.
I also think, so that fear, which is valid in my opinion, is valid fear, I don't, because they have lived it in other communities. So it's real to them. But somehow it's linked up to an entertainment venue, which to me are not connected at all.
Right.
But I call it the enemy of my enemy is my friend. And so I think that, for me, they're completely separate and not, and they don't have to be, to have some sort of an entertainment venue, doesn't have to be the amphitheater, and it doesn't have to be mutually exclusive with having apartments.
Right.
Or houses. So we have 40 acres. Forty acres is a lot of property.
At the Cultural Park.
At the Cultural Park, you can do a lot of things with 40 acres, which is why that there's going to be a master planning process.
Forty acres and a mule.
That's it. Which is why there'll be a master planning process. But now that process is convoluted and confused, right?
Right.
Okay. So the, I want our priorities to be building housing.
Yep, absolutely.
And I don't want distractions because now my concern is that we will get a lot of pushback on any type of housing because there's a lot of confusion and a lot of concerns that have been stated.
So where does this stand now?
So where it stands now is that we had gotten a grant from the State Department of Housing, which, for the two years of operations, and that's on, we, because there's a referendum that's going to be on the ballot in November, we can't, the council decided not to move forward responsibly, in my opinion, until we see the results of the election. And that may or may not fit with the timing of the Department of Housing.
Got it.
To use the money. It was a very competitive process. There were a lot of other applications that did not receive funding that could be ready. So we do not know the position of the Department of Housing as of this time, as to whether they will wait for the results of the election or not.
You know, I think one of the things that this issue focused, put focus on is a combination of issues that I think Sedona is grappling with. The short-term rental situation, the homelessness issue, the workforce housing issue, the how are businesses going to get employees if there's no place? I mean, so many things that are connected in this.
They are connected. And I tell you, I was deeply disappointed, and I've shared this with the business community, that here we believe that we are doing something to benefit the business community on behalf of the business community, and the business community did not support this initiative. And, and so the, so I wonder about the whole thing. Where did we get this so wrong? Where did we go astray? Because with all the best of intentions, from my perspective, this was not very successful.
Yeah. So I think an appropriate segue, since we brought up the housing situation, would be to talk more about the creation of affordable housing in Sedona, especially for the people that work here and can't afford to live here. Let's talk a little bit about whoever wants to grab this, maybe Kathy, you can start. This whole debate regarding workforce housing or housing in the Cultural Park versus the Dells, which I'm still trying to learn about. And there's a whole debate going on about that whole, like whether the housing should be in the Cultural Park or the Dell, can you address that? Oops, sorry. We're all hitting tables here.
Well, I think you might even here at this table, first of all, out in Sedona, you'll find at least 100 different opinions about that. And around this table, I think you'll find, there are four of us sitting here, four different opinions about that. So for me, the Cultural Park area, and again, 40 acres, which is not, it's a significant piece of land, and it is a significant piece of land within the city limits, already served by public transportation. There are bus stops on both sides of 89A, walkable to anything that will be developed within that 40-acre site. It's, it's, people would already be in, our city is growing to the west. We're landlocked. There's not a lot of place to grow up the canyon. We can't really grow out. The land that's still available for the most part is to the west. So the Cultural Park is going to be very centralized and walkable to other, to other, to other amenities in the city. I know, I live, I'm actually have a property down on Dry Creek Road that I'm very happy about now, is going to be walkable to a lot of new businesses that have opened up there. So I think that the Cultural Park Place for me was a much better place to develop. It has already been developed. It's already what we call a disturbed land. It's already been flattened. There's already been stuff that's happened there versus the Dells, which to some degree is a pristine piece of property further out of the city limits, where anybody, any development that happens out there will need to be driving their vehicles into our already over-congested city limits to get to their dry cleaner, their supermarket, the bank, whatever they may want to get to. So to me, Cultural Park Place should be developed first and foremost.
Because the people that live there, their transportation could be public and not have to be cars.
Their transportation could be public. There are things they will be able to walk to. It won't be driving in as far and looking for places to park and circling around. To me, it's the better location for that kind of development, as well as it's already down in a bowl as well. It's a depressed piece of property. The topography there lends itself well to some density that could address issues, as well as it's the proximity to hiking trails and things that are there. The View Corridor, it'll be a beautiful piece of, a place to live as well. So to me, Cultural Park Place became, is a priority for development over the Dells.
Right. Scott, where are you on this issue?
No, I agree with that wholeheartedly. I think that people are misunderstanding about the Dells. People believe that, oh, we could just go and build there. It's 200 acres on one side, on the southern side of 89A. We could just go put a backhoe in there and start building. And they don't realize it in order to do that, there's many steps that need to occur before we even put a shovel in the ground.
Right.
Because that is where we spray our effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. So all that has to be dispersed, we need wells in the ground. I think the most current, and we're all in dispute as to what the final cost would be, but for three wells in the ground, with $25 million, what's the cost?
No, it's $5 million apiece.
A piece. So that's $15 million, at least for three.
Who owns that land? The Sedona owners?
Okay.
How come there hasn't been any private commercial development there?
Because that's where we spray the effluent. That's where the water, that's the final phase from the wastewater treatment plant.
Got it.
And because it doesn't come out with it perfectly safe to drink.
Potable.
What's that? Potable, right. Because when it goes, when it's sprayed, it goes into the ground, it goes into the aquifer.
Got it.
And then it becomes clean. Okay? So all that has to be displaced, all the, you know, there's a lot of work that has to be done. I think Kathy said, there's no infrastructure for housing at all. There's no roads, there's no electric, there's nothing there. And then do we want to add to sprawl? Because going closer to Cottonwood, but also, do we want, or do I want to build and put, oh, that's where the housing is? That's, they're out of the city limits. They're not part of the city, but they should be part of the city. There's a lot of things that happen where the Western Gateway, as I like to call it, is more, it is in the city. And it's a part of the city, and I think that's important.
Can I add to that for one second?
Sure.
Also, again, being within the city limits is important. I think everybody knows, well, most people know, that our population in the city limits has fallen below 10,000. Falling below 10,000 is sort of a critical benchmark for things that happen at the state level, government level. One of the things by our population being below 10,000 was our recently approved community plan was not able to, by law, it was not able to be put out to the voters to vote on that, to our residents to accept and vote on that community plan. It became a vote of the city council, it did pass unanimously. But the, if you build outside the city of Sedona, you're not helping grow the city of Sedona, not that we want to grow things to the point that's unmanageable traffic-wise, but whether you put the housing at the Dells or Cultural Park, you're going to get the same traffic impact.
Right.
So wouldn't the benefit be of having the population grow, which would give us more control of ourselves as a city as well? It's only in the last census that we dropped below the $10,000 market. It's had repercussions.
Yeah. This issue about quote-unquote "community input," wanted to address that. So one of the council candidates, Catherine Todd, who leans conservative, I don't know exactly how much she does, has been making the case in community meetings and candidate forums that the council doesn't seek out opinions on issues from Sedona residents. And she's going to be, if she's elected to the council, she's going to be a big champion of that. Holly, you were quoted in a Red Rock News article as saying, "I think we have a gap between the council and our citizenry, and we haven't cracked the code on how to bring them together. We're trying, not always successfully, so I really appreciate the ability to work closely with Sedona residents, unite to try to fill that." Knowing you three as I do, I know you're, you want community input. I mean, you're not, you're not dictators. You know, I know you're not sitting on the board saying, we get to make all the decisions and we don't want any input. So how do you respond to this criticism that some people on the more conservative side think we've got these crazy liberals making all the decisions for the community?
I don't think that they, that the folks think that the crazy liberals are making decisions. I think what the issue is, is that they don't feel like their voices are being heard, regardless of where they come down in the political spectrum.
Agree.
But they did, but they did vote for you in order, I mean, I know, I know that's a simplistic way of looking at community input, but people voted for you in because they trusted you to make decisions.
Right, but there are some critical issues that face a community where you would like to get the community's input before you make decisions. I mean, we look at the audience every meeting and we urge people to come and comment to us, whether we can respond or not, depending on where on the agenda their comments fall. And when they want to, when something, someone said the other day, I think it was you, Kathy, things only matter when they matter. And that's, that's the code that we haven't cracked. It's that if we've been talking for two years about a safe place to park, why all of a sudden is this a, you know, reach crisis situation when there were plenty of opportunities to, for that communication? But that's human nature.
Right, right.
And.
Well, let me add to that. I think the problem is, if you have 10 people in a room and you have 10 different opinions, and the consensus on council is to go with one or two of those 10 opinions, the other eight say, well, you didn't listen to me.
Right, right. And. Well, the people that are showing up in the meetings are the ones that are going to be most vociferous about what they think.
Exactly. But we did a recent road construction on Sandborne, I believe it was, yeah, it was Sandborne. And we did the shared-use path, we fixed the road, and it was during COVID. And we literally went door to door, well, we didn't, the three of us, but city staff went door to door, hung bags with information, telling people what's going to be coming their way within a, you know. hung bags with information, telling people what's going to be coming their way within a, you know, short period of time. And at the, you know, when the construction started, people said, I didn't even know this was going to happen. Even knocking on their doors, it's hard unless it affects them, and in this case it did. They still didn't know. And we did a lot of outreach. So I don't think it's a matter of us not trying, and we are getting better. I think with this council, we have given direction to staff to be more outward with the projects going forward. But even then, it seems to be the people who are against it come out, the people who support it say, well, it's going to happen, so why do I need to get involved? Why do I need to come and have my point of my opinion heard? Because it's going my way.
Right.
And we need to get everybody.
Right. Kathy?
Yeah, I would, I I agree with what Vice Mayor Pluke said. I don't think that somebody saying, my voice isn't being heard, breaks down around political lines. I think most people will feel their voice isn't being heard, and many people think their voice isn't being heard, but they haven't shared their voice either, which is a difficult position. One of the things when Holly and I first ran four years ago, we ran on a platform of of trying to make sure that the messages coming out of city council, the information got out there more. Part of what we did, and Mayor Jablo, then council member Jablo, and now Mayor Jablo, supported as well, was increased funding in our communication department. So what happened was that communication department grew in terms of people, in terms of resources, in terms of outside professional help as well, has gone, we've gone New Millennium, right? And is now has a Facebook presence also and is using. I we were sitting recently in a forum for candidates. And one candidate even said, I think it would be a good idea if the city had one button they could push to send out the agenda that it reached everybody. Well, that does exist. But the thing is, Stephen, if I want to get a message to you, I can't email you if I don't have your email address. So I need you to give me your email address in order for me to email you. So that's the missing link is how do we get more people to sign up, to understand that there is a way? On the city council, on the city website, there is a contact form where with one button, you only type once your opinion on whatever it is, whether it's an agenda item coming up or just something that you're thinking is a good idea or a bad idea.
Right.
You type it up, you press send, and it goes to all the city council members and the city manager with one click. So I mean, we've been trying to find ways to communicate more proactively. It's a challenge. It's, as I said, Holly and I ran on that four years ago. It's frustrating to us that four years later, especially after having, you know, we do, as I said, fund it, put our money where our the city's money where its mouth is, right? But it's, it is a hard nut to crack.
Yeah, yeah. Scott, you want?
One thing I wanted to add to what Kathy just said, there's another place that you could put your name to and your email to. There's a another area on the city website where you could check off all these boxes. I believe it's on maybe eighteen different boxes of things that you want to know. And every morning you'll get into your inbox, whatever those topics are, whether it's parks and rec, you know, current events.
Right, that's great.
Traffic advisory things. There's a host of, you know, council meeting agendas, okay? And people do that, some people don't. Maybe we should be better at getting that information out to let people know. But all that information, I was told a long time ago that we are the most of city councils and cities in the Verde Valley. Our information is totally transparent, and yet people accuse us of not being transparent. How much we can do, we could always do better. And I think this council realizes we will do better. But how much can you do before people, you know, I can't go and hand someone a letter every single day. They have to take their own initiative if they really want it. And setting up this checkbox, which lasts until you turn it off, you'll get things in your inbox every morning, whenever it's current, you'll get it.
Yeah.
But you have to make that one step.
So so the flip side, for lack of a better phrase, of of what we've been talking about in terms of people having knowledge and understanding and communicating what their thoughts and issues are, is that there are a lot of things that the council is doing and has done on a very positive level that a lot of people don't know about. And we're going to talk about a bunch of those things right after I acknowledge my sponsor. That's the point of the show. So a word about my terrific sponsor, and this is actually the last show they're sponsoring, unless I can talk them into doing more down the road. Nestled in the heart of our breathtaking Sedona, husband and wife Damian Bruno and Danielle Gian have not just lived, but flourished for more than twenty years in the Verde Valley. As pillars of the village of Oak Creek, they've raised a family, volunteered tirelessly with the Rotary Club of Sedona Village and the Sedona Village Partnership, and for a decade have been the proud organizers of the beloved annual community barbecue in the VOC, which I recently emceed, by the way, and Ryan Thompson and Chuck Helstein of KAZM provided music as DJs. It was a great event. They had a great crowd in the village.
That's like four hundred people, right?
Yeah, I mean, it was terrific. And it was, it was just great, and it was a lot of fun to to emcee that event. So Damian and Danielle aren't just your next real estate agents. They're your neighbors, your friends, and a top Sedona team ready to support you, whether you're buying or selling. With two decades of real estate expertise and a love of this community that's second to none, Damian and Danielle's Sedona Village Real Estate Group is the go-to business for your real estate needs. They want to make your Sedona dream a reality. So contact them today at sedonarealestateagents.com because community and experience matter. So back to talking about what the council is up to. As when Kathy came into the studio, she gave me a double sided cheat sheet, for lack of a better, with more bullet points than I can possibly count. And that's records and goals of the council. I had already on the website, which is has voluminous information, by the way, when I checked it out to do my research, I found a bunch of things. This expands on it. So just a few of the talking points, I'll tell my listeners that the council has been involved in, and then my guests can expand on it. So there has been mitigating traffic congestion. There have been housing solutions, like, for instance, supporting public and private partnerships to develop transitional affordable and workforce workforce housing alternatives. There's been emergency response and evacuation plans. The cultural park master planning. Let's go. Increased recreation programs, which I'm sure all the people active in in this area love. Especially the pickleball courts, I think are going to be very popular with as many people who's doing that. There's sustainability projects, dedication to to art and culture programs, which is close to my heart, and state legislative advocacy. So, you know, who wants to start with what the what the key big ones are that you're pretty proud of and happy about what's happened?
Well
Holly, you can do.
I really want to start by saying that people who don't think they can make a difference, I want to point to an area where they had make a difference in this list, and that has to do with emergency response and evacuation.
Which is huge.
Very huge. And residents from a particular neighborhood in Uptown had approached council, individual counselors, as well as city staff, about some concerns they had with with evacuations after a number of fires devastated communities. And since they're at the top of Uptown, their access points are few. And they were very concerned. So they came and they met with Kathy and myself, other counselors. We took, we, we, their issues resonated with us, and we took the matter forward. I would say that you don't know what you don't know. And the city is not responsible for evacuations and emergency planning. The counties are. And of course, we live in two counties. So you have the counties, you have the sheriff's office, you have PD, you have the fire department, you have a lot of different stakeholders. And through the relentless efforts of these residents in Uptown, they brought all the people together, and they initially got a lot of pushback. We have plans. We're good. We don't have any issues. And once they started to have communications and and talk to each other, I think they realized that there was more to this issue than first was realized. And Chief Huestead really became the champion locally within the that community, law enforcement, fire protection community. And we were able to get a grant, we're able to do a pilot project, which which was done by Coconino County Emergency Services. They led that effort, but both counties participated. And now that has become a program that is being flouted about as a real differentiator within the state, the first community, to move in the direction that we did, to have a household brochure of what to do, how to plan, what everything means, how to sign up for notifications in it, in a, you know, sixth grader with a lot of pictures. So anybody, kids, older folks, you know, everybody, English not as a first language, can can access it and use it as a guideline. So that's where we worked together, council, city staff, county staff, residents, and created something.
Right, right.
And so I would give a lot of kudos to those residents who who wouldn't take no for an answer and wound up creating something that was quite unique and helpful for others.
That's great. A couple of days before I was, I was planning for the show, working on my my talking points, Kathy was good enough to send me a list of what I guess are her favorite things.
Getting the reputation as a list maker.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I'm I'm big on that, too. So the the main thing you focused on when you sent me this was the park and recreation programs and saying there's been a big increase in programming over the last couple of years. I'll just mention a few of them, and then you can expand. The expansion of the dog park, the preservation of Yappy Hour, which is dog related as well, the pickleball courts, which I mentioned, the bocce ball courts, refurbished basketball court, installation of a disc golf course, which is getting popular, the extended loop of the fitness trail, the expedited creation of a ranger park, and improvements in the swimming pool operations. And I guess the list goes on. So talk a little bit about how that all came about. I know there was a city budget, a council budget just released for next year. How's that going to impact on all this going forward? Talk a little bit about that.
One of the interesting questions I get from people is they say, oh, I watched that meeting. You went on for, you know, six hours. Why do you like being on council? One of the reasons I like
Because you're a glutton for punishment.
Well, that too maybe. But one of the reasons I like being on council is because you can have an actual impact on people's daily lives.
Absolutely.
And there's, parks and recreation might be one of the best places that illustrates that. There's a tension sometimes in our community where businesses think everything you do is for the residents, you know, and you don't care about businesses and the business, the residents say, you don't listen to residents, you just do what's good for business because that's, you know, where sales, retail tax income comes from. Night, they're both right, they're both wrong, because we listen to everybody. But one of the places where residents can see a real improvement in their day to day life is in these programs that they are using far, at a far greater level than tourists are using.
Well, especially since you have so many retirees that
Correct.
that are still active.
Pickleball has grown exponentially throughout the nation and even at a faster rate within the state of Arizona. In Sedona, it's it's off the charts, the usage at the moment, and we want to accommodate that usage. So you have eight brand new pickleball parks that are going in at Posse Grounds Park. At the same time, because that's going to go in, that allowed for the redevelopment of a walking path that's going to create a one mile walking loop that connects to an already existing fitness path, which happens to go by the brand new two regulation sized bocce courts with a new league that is just getting started up, which is in view of the basketball court that was just completely refurbished. So whatever ball you want to play with, you can go and do it in Sedona.
And you still have the softball field out there, right?
Absolutely. That's been preserved as well as creating new multipurpose off, taking some of it for the pickleball courts has created a space that will be a multipurpose use for either more passive recreation. If you just want a lawn to have a picnic, you can do that there. If you want, it's a place where we might be able, the dogs will continue to run. We're looking into that now because they're currently on the athletic field and moving them potentially to the other field. That's all in discussion at the moment. But one of the things that I'm really proud of, and again, four years ago, Holly and I ran on this and were able to see it through, was the acceleration of Ranger Park over on Brewer Road. All of the traffic to use all of those wonderful facilities that I mentioned, that are city sponsored facilities, had to come into West Sedona. We need to disperse out the amenities into the neighborhoods where people live. People on Brewer Road who have a real challenge with traffic because they have to come out through either the Y or the subsequent circle didn't have anything in their neighborhood to walk to, to, you know, to sit there, to watch children play, to bring their families to. Because a lot of what this council as a whole has identified, I've heard every single person on that day has speak to this at one time or another about how we want to be a community that is welcoming for families. We want to find ways to bring families back into this community. How do you do that? You have to first, you have to, education is huge for that. That's a little outside our scope, although we certainly work on it legislatively in our advocacy and collaboratively with school district. But you can create places where that families can enjoy. The splash pad down on Sunset Park is just, people rave over that. New shade structures at the play equipment in Posse Grounds Park. This, the play equipment that is going in down on Ranger Park is going to be, I think, a crowning jewel for Sedona. You're going to have this wonderful natural fiber material wood of a huge javelina that you can climb on, you could slide down, you can play on with a baby javelina next to it for some of the smaller kids, a coconut made swing system that is not your traditional swing system where kids sit by side by side and look ahead. They have to work collaboratively together to get the swing functioning. Team building in an early age, right? While you're having fun doing it, looking at the beautiful red rocks and the wonderful art in the park that we brought over with Stormy Bay, the very famous horse that has already been in place in the park there. We've done a lot, moving local parks and recreation. We've tried to do a lot up here, again, on the local level for arts and culture. We've supported the local artists exhibitions exhibitions at City Hall and in other cities. There's not city sponsored space that doesn't have some arts component to it at this point.
It's nice to see the increased library funding during the time where around the country books are being banned.
It's nice to see that. It's unfortunate as to why it was necessary. There was a huge cut in funding that came from the county to our library system and
Scott smiling over there like, oh, boy, those people.
Right, that's exactly. It's more of a smirk than a smile. But and the city was fortunate to be able to have the resources that we look at to 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 step in and and close that gap and provide that funding so that those services there that serve, again, our youth, our children, our seniors, people who may not have access to the internet at home, that that, all of that can continue.
Right. I know you guys, you guys don't do, you know, do this job so you can get constant slaps on the back, and it's always more easy to criticize and to praise. But are you getting acknowledgements about these programs as much as you would like? Are people aware of the chase? Scott, you might want to address that.
So, you know, what's nice about this council, all seven of us are out in the public.
Yeah.
We don't hide. We're all out there. We all take emails. I've been receiving phone calls from people who were so appreciative of it. But these are the people that say, well, I knew it was coming. Why do I need to come to a council meeting? But to to show my appreciation or to to champion for those projects. I'm hearing a lot of good things coming from people who I never even heard from before. There's a a local business owner by Talakapaki who said, I can't believe how much is happening now. Traffic is a is a big problem. It was a big problem.
Right, I was going to bring that up, so I'm glad you addressed that.
And, you know, it takes a couple of years to design anything to do with traffic. And then we have to work with ADOT, the Arizona Department of Transportation.
And what's happening over by Talakapaki?
Well, there's an underpass being worked on right now. We expect it to be done this year, I think in June or July.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
But it took many years to design it. We have a new road, access road from Forest Road, the Forest Road Extension is going to come down past the firehouse in Uptown, it's going to come down to eighty-nine A. That's a dual purpose of the road, one, just to give access to people in Uptown, but also as Holly mentioned before about the emergency evacuation, that's what's critical for that. It took years to design, and now it's all coming to fruition. And people now seeing all this construction going on, and they're saying, wow, a lot of stuff is going on. I had no idea.
Yeah, yeah. So you're you're the mayor, but you're also a member of the council. So as a member of the council, what are you most pleased about that the council has done in the two years that you've been mayor and on the council, and that you're most proud of?
I think that we are all focused in the right direction to get these projects moving forward.
Right.
We have all, and we don't always agree. That's a given. We don't all agree, but we all have the same purpose in mind to do better for the city.
Right.
These traffic, we call them Sedona in motion. These traffic, uh, uh, we call them Sedona in Motion SIM projects. It's all to, to help mitigate the traffic. We're all on the same page with that. Some people are under the misconception that we're going to solve traffic. We're going to get rid of that traffic.
It's always going to be an issue, right?
And if, but if that was possible, I tell people that if that was possible, New York City wouldn't have traffic anymore. You could drive down the Long Island Expressway through the Midtown Tunnel with, unencumbered by any traffic. It's impossible to do.
Yeah.
But we are eliminating our pinch points. The crosswalk at, at Tlakapaki has been a problem for years. It's not the only problem. It's the entire area of the Y, the traffic circle at St. Emily Hill Roundabout. They all work together. We have to take care of all these mitigating, uh, issues. And this council is focused on doing the good things for the community.
That's great. You know, I, I could be completely wrong about this. You can correct me because you've all been living here a lot longer than I have. Um, this notion that people have always have about the sort of dynamic or the dichotomy of feeling between somebody who's a tourist and somebody who's a resident. Um, and they make the transition from tourist to resident and then their priorities and their opinions about what's going on completely change. Is that valid? Is, is that something that, you know, you constantly deal with?
Must be valid. We've all done it.
Right, right. I mean, uh, so i- is it, is it a problem trying to balance this, this notion of doing what's good for the tourists and doing what's good for the residents? I mean, is that always a, an issue?
It, it has to be a balance. I think because our city is run by a sales tax, not a property tax. We, we pay property taxes, but to other areas, not to, to run the city. So that's our income and we don't want businesses to go out of business. We don't want to see, you know, closed, uh, boarded up buildings. So we all moved into a tourist town.
Yep.
But to give you a larger issue, we have people who moved onto the airport mesa. They moved under an airport. And yet, once they hear, they're saying, you have to do something about those helicopters. You have to do something about the noise of the planes.
Mm-hmm.
And yet they moved here. So that's one issue. We have other issues of people who say, well, now that I'm here, we have, why do we have traffic? Do something about the traffic. So it is a balance.
Yeah, yeah. Kathy?
Yeah, um, I, for myself, I like living in a community that does have a six-screen movie theater of, for traditional movies and a two-screen movie theater for independent films. I mean, that's great in a size for a town under 10,000 people.
Because Cottonwood doesn't have one and Camp Verde doesn't have, they have no movie theaters at all.
Right. I don't even think there's an independent film, uh, they use part of Harkins up in Flagstaff, but Flagstaff doesn't have the same kind of art house.
And we love those communities, by the way.
We do. We love them dearly, dearly. But, but I, but I think that it's important, again, yes, you have to balance this because part of the reason that we moved here, for me, I think I'm speaking for my colleagues here, is that we were attracted to Sedona because of its beauty and the red rocks and the hiking. But also we had four grocery stores to choose from. It wasn't that you were moving into someplace where our hands were going to be tied when we would not have cultural stimulation at the expense of the physical stimulation. I mean, the balance is important in everything you do for your life, including in the life and health of your community. And Stephen, before, I know you're getting close on time, but there was one sort of master subject area that I think is so important to us that, that hasn't been touched on at all. And that's the area of, of sustainability and environmental concern.
Absolutely.
And I just think that it's a place where people don't realize how, what the city's doing because we think of that as global. We think of polar ice caps melting. We think of greenhouse gas emissions, you know, poking holes in the ozone. But it's something that happens on the local level that this city council has also paid attention to. And thank God for our professional, intelligent, well-versed staff. Uh, we've been able to do things like increase, um, the number of charging stations, electric vehicles, charging stations in the city, making it really easy for people to come here that need to get their, that redone. Increased funding for the Red Rock Trail Fund and keeping our trails, exactly what we're talking about, something that people love about Sedona. Um, we've been able to, um, change things, operations at the water plant, where we've retained more of our gray water, the water that we might need for future use. Um, we have an energy retrofit program, uh, for people who need to make improvements in their home funded by the city. Um, it's, there's just, it's just an area I didn't want to have an hour of conversation and not talk about that because it's so important locally and globally.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad you brought that up. Um, Holly, what's, um, this is, this is a lot of things you guys are doing. Is there anything not on this, um, voluminous list of bullet points that are on the wishlist?
Yes, I have, I have a wishlist.
Okay, give it to us.
Although I just said the other day, it's going to be pushed out a few years, my wishlist because of, of the garage that we're going to move forward with.
Uh-huh.
But, uh, I would like to see us have a community recreation center.
Here, here.
Hmm.
And, uh, I think that that would really, we'd have a year-round pool. And we have a lot of people who are, who are, uh, who love to swim. Uh, both swim teams as well as individuals. We could have, because of, we live in Arizona and we have hot weather, we have indoor sports activities in the months, which it's too hot to play outside. And I think we, I think that's really important and is a payback for, for our community members. And again, my goal is to see children playing in this community.
Can the council start a little league? So I actually have players I can coach at Red Rock High School. Is that possible?
There used to be a little league.
I know. I'm, I'm only kidding. Scott, what about you? What's your, on your wishlist?
Well, what, what Holly said is, it rings true for me as well. And that's why this master plan for the cultural park or Western Gateway, as I am calling it, we're going to do a one-year outreach. That's something that people have been asking us to do, having a pool, rec center, similar to Cottonwood.
Mm-hmm.
Because the pool that we have here is only open a few months a year because of the weather. That is something we could give our community, but it's very expensive and it's a money loser. But we're not here to make money. We're here to give, uh, amenities to our community. And I think that that would be, uh, something fantastic to be, to have.
We don't, we don't have a lot of time left and I don't want to open a can of worms. So if you can respond to this really quickly. The idea of this amphitheater being resurrected in the cultural park, which, you know, I, I think is kind of a misguided, uh, goal, given the size of this community. I'm going to go around the table. What do you think real quick?
Uh, I think that if you can't, we can't support that in terms of traffic that it would bring in. We do not have the infrastructure in place for something that would be large scale that people are talking about. If it's smaller scale, we have, in my opinion, an underutilized facility at the high school, which is the Sedona Performing Arts Center. We have the outdoor theater up at Posse Grounds Park as well, which is a very small venue. I think that's 300 or something. But, um, but we, bringing in something that's going to talk about bringing in thousands of people is not something I think is good.
And won't be, be able to be used year-round, right? Like, uh, Scott, you feel the same way? Sorry.
Well, it's a little bit different, but yes, in the same direction. Uh, you, you would be looking at 2,500 cars per vent.
Yeah.
Every day, Saturday, Sunday, Friday. Okay, you're going to have changing cars. Uh, but I know you're, you know, out of time. So yes, I, I feel that it's something that could be looked at during the, uh, cultural park, uh, outreach. We could be, we could be discussing it then, but quite honestly, I see a lot of negatives that, that would be a detriment.
Yeah, I agree. Holly, you say?
I, I'd like to see a business plan, which I haven't seen yet of, of how this would make sense.
Yeah, okay.
Cause I think we're talking, people are, are not communicating with one another.
Yeah, okay. Well, I, I, that was great. I mean, we got a lot in.
You could do part two.
I, yeah, well, we can. I have to do a show every week. I need content. Well, that's, I, that's all the time we have. I want to thank my special Sedona City Council guest, Mayor Scott Jablow, Vice Mayor Holly Plug, Councilmember Kathy Consella. Thanks all of you for coming.
Thank you, Stephen.
And again, special thanks to my show sponsor, Damian and Danielle Sedona Village Real Estate Group with Coldwell Banker. You want to seek them out for your real estate needs because their devotion to the community and their experience matter. Thanks again to my main man and producer, Ryan Thompson. By the way, tell your friends who couldn't hear the show today that they can listen to a podcast version anytime on Apple Podcasts and Spotify. You can also find Sedona Life with Stephen Hanks on Facebook and Instagram. Thanks for listening to Red Rock Country's Radio Magazine. Catch you next Saturday morning at 9:00 AM. Have a great weekend, everyone.